No, we got the heat on now. Well, we just did it. It just got done.
Why don't you start smelling the...
Oh, I just did that.
Madam Mayor, it is 6:08 and we are live.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome, everyone, to the special meeting of the Lake Worth Beach City Commission of January 9th, 2025. Can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Betty Rush.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sarah Malaga.
Present.
Commissioner Christopher McVoys absent. Commissioner Mimi May.
I'm here.
Commissioner Reynaldo Diaz.
Present.
Thank you. Okay, so we are here on unfinished business tonight. And I left my folder in the office. There's a folder?
Oh, I left mine in the office, too. No, I want my own.
Madam Mayor, we do have the pledge.
Oh, all right.
All right, I already did it, so I'll go get my folder.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
She is funny. I haven't said the Pledge of Allegiance so much in my life. I said it yesterday at the legislative meeting. So tonight, we have a continuation of the overview discussion of the Community Sustainability Department, the functions, the responsibilities, and programs. So, take it away, staff.
For the record, William Waters, Community Sustainability Director, and with me is Alicia Wilson, who is our Office/Budget Manager. She also is in charge of the Business License Division. And Yolanda Robinson is here from Co-Compliance as our Assistant Director. Yolanda Bryant. Sorry.
I'll never forget what's her name.
So at our previous meeting, we went over the Administrative Division, the Planning and Preservation Division, the Building Division, and most of the Co-Compliance divisions. So we're going to pick up with the Business License Division and then later on, the Strategic Planning and Urban Design Division. So, as you may know, we created a Lake Worth Business License about 13 years ago. It has three components: the business tax receipt, which is governed by Florida statute; the use and occupancy certificate piece of it, which establishes what is the conforming or possibly non-conforming use and occupancy for that space; and then also an inspection. And unless you pass all three pieces or provide information, you cannot have your business license issued. So I'm going to allow Ms. Wilson to describe the business license application process. And then we have some numbers there for you to look at, and then we can go from there.
How many pages is your presentation?
A lot. I mean, I don't remember how many the individual numbers, but 31.
Okay.
We already reviewed the first 25 slides at the last meeting.
Right, right. I love to take notes on things. It'd be nice if I had it to write on. That's okay. Maybe we can get it printed out later.
Are you ready for Ms. Wilson to talk? Okay, all right.
Hello, this is Alicia Wilson, Office/Budget Manager. I'm a little nervous because it's my first time, so y'all go easy on me.
Girl, you got this.
Okay, so we are responsible for invoicing and pricing and preparing an invoice for customers who request a business license in the city of Lake Worth Beach. Our intake staff collects the application. They will categorize it sometimes with the help of planning and zoning to get it into the right category, and we will send them an invoice. Once the customer comes in and pays, the license is actually then entered into the system and is transferred to Planning and Zoning for their initial review. That could take anywhere from a day, depending on their workload, up to two weeks. It just depends on where they are with everything else that Planning and Zoning takes care of. Once they have the approval from Planning and Zoning, it is then would notify the customer that they're now ready to have their inspection done through Code Compliance. We notify them to contact Code Compliance to schedule their use and occupancy inspection. The inspection, of course, it takes place initially and then every three years after that. So that's not an annual thing. And every year that they renew, they're renewing the BTR portion and the use and occupancy portion. Licensing period is October 1st of every year through September 30th of every year. The notifications, the renewal notices, we try to send out at the end of July, early August, so that they have it well before the expiration date of the license. And they can renew as early as July 1st for the next year. Most recently, numbers, about 6,500 business licenses are processed annually. That includes the BTR and the use and occupancy inspection. Those occur simultaneously every single year. And every third year, they also have the inspection. According to this, I think, is that number close to correct? About 1 million annually for the general fund from business license revenue.
Now, caveat, that's the total amount: business tax receipt payments, use and occupancy certificate payments, and inspections, all combined, those three parts, generate about $1 million for the city each year. The other part is that every property in the city that is not homestead exemption is going to have some kind of recordation with the city. It's either how they're going to have a business license as a residential rental, a commercial rental, a tenant being in that business, or an affidavit of non-rental, which means it's a residential property that may be inhabited by those other than the owners, but it's not being held out for rent to the public. And so we require that everybody have something with the city so we can keep track, except for those properties that have homestead exemptions. If a real homestead exemption has a residential accessory dwelling unit in the backyard, they will require to have a residential rental license for that portion of their property.
If they rent it out?
If they rent it out.
But if they don't?
If they don't, they don't have to have anything. However, a vast majority of the accessory dwelling units in the city are considered non-conforming. So we encourage people who have a homestead exemption or not to maintain a business license on those accessory dwelling units that are non-conforming, even if they're rented, because they could lose the non-conformity, and then it would have to be converted to an accessory structure and could not be rented out at a later date.
Okay, so if someone, just so they understand it. So if someone has a homestead property, they have a house up front, and it's all, you know, it's new, new construction, you know. There's a house up front and there's a, you know, apartment in the back. That's when friends come, they stay there. What does he have to do?
Okay, well, this is why it's difficult. If it's new construction and it's a single-family residential, you could not build an accessory dwelling unit in the backyard.
No, it's multifamily. I'm assuming it's done with, you know, with zoning and permits, the way it's supposed to be.
If you have your guests stay there and it's not being rented, you don't have to have a business license. Going back to the, we do have a lot of accessory dwelling units in the single-family residential district, as well as a single-family, two-family district, which many of those are considered non-conforming. So we do encourage people, so if you've had it rented and you're not renting it, it behooves you to keep or maintain your business license so that you will have the opportunity to rent it out again later in the future. Otherwise, you will lose that non-conformity, and you will not be able to rent it out. But your friends can still stay there, your mother-in-law, brother-in-law, cousins, as long as it's not held out for lease.
Okay, what if it's conforming? Then they just use it as a guest house. What do they have to do?
They don't have to have a business license.
Do they have to have a...
Nope. It's all three things or none three things.
Okay, and I'm going to call a client, not a client, a citizen, and give them that good news, because I just got a very sort of terse phone call that they were told that they had to spend money to get a non-rental license for what, something? I believe it's fairly new construction and it's...
Okay, well, if that is not homesteaded?
It is homesteaded.
Okay, well, then they should probably not have to do a non-rental affidavit. If it's not homesteaded and it's new construction...
That's different, of course, yeah.
That requires some different, but we may have to look at that individually.
You can speak.
Oh, Yolanda, he's on the Bryant.
Whatever your name.
Just provide us with the information so we can research it before you call the customer back, because I don't want them upset, you know, before we research it.
And I also understand probably better than anybody on this dais that when someone calls and has a problem with the city, there's a good chance I'm not getting the entire story. So just, I understand.
And I believe a non-affidavit registration is only $25, isn't it?
And then, let me just, I have one more question.
I'm sorry, it's 50. It went up.
Yeah, it's how much now? 50. Let's say, and I do, I have a rental ADU behind my house. Let's say I no longer rent it. My family lives there. How do I know, because we had a problem with this years ago with a client, how does someone know that when they stop renting it, you know, they don't renew their rental license? The city assumes they're just renting it without a license. But if they're just saying, no, I want my kids to live there now, how does that person know to call the city, to notify the city of the non-rental?
And that's part of what's on the rental license information itself, is that when you cease to, like, rent the space anymore or you're closing your business, you're encouraged on the rental license itself to call the city and let us know that you're not operating your business there anymore or you're not renting. We do have one staff person who's dedicated and is very excited about it. Every year that she calls almost everyone that has not been renewed and checks with them, what is the status of your rental license? Did you forget to renew it? Have you moved? Are you no longer renting it?
Okay, great.
And she has a very high compliance rate.
All right. Ms. Malaga, thank you.
Thank you. Can we get to the 19th century and start doing things digitalized instead of sending a license out that then the person may not receive? And then they call, and then they're told they have to pay for another printing of the license when they haven't received it? I know that we use a third party to send out the business license, but I was called multiple times by a couple of business owners who did not receive their business license. And I'm wondering with the new Navaline increase in the ERP system if we can start moving to just emailing them a digital file that they can have on, instead of us paying for printing and envelopes and the printer and all that.
It has to be...
That is one of our, it has to be displayed.
Right, they have to display it, yeah.
There are quite a number of improvements that we're working on because of that new enhancement. It hasn't all been put in place yet. But all the application materials are online. You can apply for it online, correspondence is through email. We are still working on the online bill payment portion, and business licenses will come after the Building Division is successfully launched. And we launched it, and we got one, and we had some problems. And so it hasn't been relaunched yet until we work out the problems with that one. But it's coming soon.
If they send in the renewal, you cash the check. Instead of us sending off the license to be printed, why can we not just upload the PDF and email it to the customer? Because it's not fair or adequate. I'm just saying for me, I don't think it's fair that a business owner doesn't get their license. They call, and they're told, okay, well, it's been sent in the mail. You'll have to pay $25 for it to be reprinted.
Well, you'll find this kind of oxymoronic, but we cannot scan and send them the business license unless we print it. And those are printed in-house.
You guys...
Navaline cannot create the business license without it being printed. I know, I know.
You scan them in, then? Is that how that works?
We can, and we have. We will scan it, send it to them, and also send in the paper.
That is so archaic.
Commissioner Malaga, it's just taken us, I committed to the city two years. My anniversary with 14 was last week, and so things move a lot slower than I anticipated.
There's sloth movement, and I think that's kind of where we're at, because, I mean, this is one thing that I think that, you know, if we could become more business-friendly, and that is just one small step, but I can't believe...
I get my little rental licenses in the mail. I just, you know, I put them up and that out.
Well, so do I. I get my business license, but I'm just, I'm trying to, again... Or how do we not charge the person $25 to reprint? Can't they just come in and come to your office and have you reprint or give them a copy of it? No, they're charged $25.
Or, no disrespect, they need to keep consistent addresses with Papa and with staff so that they can receive their business license as well, which on the business license, we give them the opportunity to update their addresses, to update everything. If they do not fill out all the information properly, they're not going to receive the business license. So some things, you want to kind of like make them responsible for the process as well, because we won't be able to do everything for them.
Understood.
They have to take on some of the responsibilities of updating those addresses and stuff. We also even ask for someone local to be here so we can contact that person locally if we need to contact them. We need all that information. They still fill out paperwork.
No, I'm talking like a brick and mortar, like a restaurant in town where their license has been going there, and then all of a sudden, the license didn't show up this year. Like those kind of situations. Not necessarily rentals.
And we can discuss possibly, and this will be, you know, part of our fees and charges discussion. We could contemplate, you get one free renewal. I will say, and I'm not denigrating another governmental agency, however, the U.S. mail has become extremely unreliable. And we are going to have to move to other means of communicating with the public, like you've suggested with emails. But it's difficult to email someone if we don't have the email address. And we are requesting for all that information on the renewal notices, as well as the initial applications. But it's amazing how often we get the renewal and it's just a check. And sometimes we've got to figure out, well, what check does this go to? There's no renewal slip. And we can backdoor, do about the name of the business or the person. Alicia's staff is pretty good at being able to decipher whose check, what business. It's a lot of time.
I will say, though, this year, well, last year when we ran licenses, a couple of customers were calling in that they had gotten their renewal notice electronically. We were not aware that that could happen, and it did. And it was wonderful, so we encourage customers to give us that. And if they opt, we just check the button to receive it electronically, and they can. And many customers that I've talked to that have not received it, I've actually been able to get them to sign up for that. So next, well, this year when we send them out, they will get that email and it says, bing, here's your renewal. So that's a step in the right direction. But getting it to them is a different story. Again, with U.S. mail, I'm okay with that. With William, maybe give him one free, and then after that, we'll charge.
One free reprinting.
Right, right.
You said renewal. You said renewal.
Reprint.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just want to be clear.
Just want to be clear.
And finally, we also collaborate with utilities.
We have one more, excuse me, Mr. Diaz.
I'm so sorry over there.
I'm sure you meant no disrespect.
Not good on your first time. So on that note, and I think Mrs. Bryant brings up a really good point, because for brick and mortar and that, like, businesses that are very obvious, they're not going anywhere, they're physically located, and they have a sign in front, that's definitely one thing. But you bring up a really solid point about our residential rentals and, you know, the ordinances we've passed. And it's, people do need to have, take responsibility and maintain and check their current mailing address. But if you look at, you know, I'm not sure what ours are, but I remember, I think driver's license, it's something like obscene. It's like something like 40% of people don't update their addresses. And it, and so, you know, if we do a digital license, I think for something like residential rentals, maybe there should be something where we can check and verify contact info, especially a mailing address, in case they need to be served or something, but...
And it's the same, it's the Papa address, like we do for code enforcement.
Which are rarely updated, too.
Co-compliance must notify through the Papa address. The business license should be, you know, the address should match Papa for what you're renting. But where you want to receive your mail should be where you want to receive your mail. And a lot of the business licenses for residential rental go back to the residence that's being rented, and it gives to the tenant.
Right.
And then the owner complains they didn't get a business license. I'm like, well, we don't know where else to mail it because the Papa address is that.
Is the same.
And so maintaining the address is where you want to receive information, both for co-compliance and tax notification, is a Papa address. And then we also, if you want mail sent to a different address, you need to have it sent to us. And likely, people have asked us, why can't we send the co-compliance notices to two addresses? And in theory, we kind of could, but the Florida statute requires, and Ms. Bryant can confirm it, we have to mail it to the address that's listed in Papa, even if you haven't gotten mail there for five years.
But if they send you a letter that says, that is not my address, here is my address?
We can provide them copies of what was sent for co-compliance, but that co-compliance letter has to match up with the address on Papa.
How hard is it to change on Papa?
It's not, we can't.
No, you can, I know that, but I don't even know if I could change it on Papa. I mean, that's my address on the deed is the address on the deed.
You have to go to the Papa, I mean, the property manager's office and make a change of address application.
But what we do allow in co-compliance, there's the, when you put in the general information in the case, there is an option where you can put in additional addresses. Now, we're not going to take it out of the owner's address because it has to match Papa.
Right.
But we will put an additional address in, and we'll send that information to the additional address, but it's going to go to the address that's...
So you'll do two? Oh, then there's no problem, yeah. That's perfect.
A lot of times we get in hearing, and they say, well, I have a different address. Well, give us the address, and we'll send the address as well. So if they give us that information, we can use it. But a lot of times, we do not know.
Right.
But just to reiterate, the official notices of violation, the address on it has to match the same timeframe as the address that's on Papa.
No, no, they're not. But if we can, if somebody can say, and also, please send it to this address, that's, so, and, okay. My photo is, how do we get the, my question is, how do we get that information to people? Could it be on the website? Could, you know, like, somehow, if you don't live at the address of your rental, add the address, because we'll send it to two people, to two addresses. I don't know that people know that.
A lot of it, a lot of it is already listed in various places, either on the business license application, the business license renewal, the notices of violation. Sadly, we can't read it for people. If we could, it would be great. You could push a button on the website and say, please read all the things I need to know. And we could have somebody through AI read that to them. And maybe we'll get there. We have a new AI function that I'm getting ready to test out tomorrow.
Important notes, one, you know, give us another, just like not...
Some of it.
It's on the website?
But people that don't, a lot of people don't read it. And we do have a new AI function that's tied to our website that it's possible that you could push a button and the person ask a question, and it'll give you a response back from what one of the IT people, and his name has left me, even though I originally hired him, is that the whole code of ordinances, I believe, has been fed to the AI icon. And it can answer things based on what it's learned from our code of ordinances, which could be both really good or really bad.
I want to know about that.
AI didn't do so good with writing a planning and zoning report.
Okay, Ms. May has a question.
One of them you already asked, and clearly you guys are busy. So I do have a question, though. What if, what if there's a business that it doesn't have a license?
What is the question about that? I mean, if it's a business operator, they must have a business license.
Okay, what if they don't, and they are operating their business?
They can be cited by co-compliance, in theory, or PBSO, depending on where the business activity is taking place.
So if somebody, let's say I have, I don't know, I have a business, and the guy next door has a business. And he's running a business that he either doesn't have a business for or the business license is for something he's not doing. Like, he has a garage, and he's running a car shop, but it says it's a... Donut shop. So my question is, how does, so if I were that businessperson that lived next door, could I, do I just go in and regular code report and report that? And, I mean, it's not like you're driving around checking businesses to match their business licenses, right?
There is some proactive co-compliance in that, in that area.
Okay, so can you, let me, yeah, explain that.
When we're doing a use and occupancy inspection... When we're doing the use and occupancy inspections, the business that's on the license has to be what's performed on the inside. So we have to see that those businesses are being performed. That's one thing. Now, if the business is not allowed, but they're still operating that business, that's when we go through legal and have them draft, they're cease and desist, and try to go through legal to get them to stop operating that business if it's not allowed. So it depends on the circumstance how we will handle that situation. Some things you can go through a code case, but some things we can't. We don't have any teeth to do anything, so we have to go through legal to help us out.
Can you turn off their electricity?
No. Well, especially if it's a rental license, you're going to turn off the...
Yeah, but no, 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 I'm talking about like a business, like somebody who's using...
Okay, but her question is a good one, because it has come up when that original ordinance was conceived. Right now, your utilities cannot be turned on until you have an active business license.
But if I don't keep that active, they don't get turned off?
They can't. Once they're turned on...
By state law?
That's, I'm not sure, maybe the attorney can help, but it's like... Because we had this issue with a church.
Well, life and safety is a home. Life and safety is not, in my world, not a business.
But life and safety, we can turn your water off if you don't pay your water bill.
So you can turn the water off, but you can't turn the electric off?
I believe you can turn the electric off, too, if you have a, but that's a payment issue, not a lack of license issue. And I've tried to marry the two, and we've been trying to come creative about that, and we just didn't get very far, because we had several businesses. They made application for their business license, temporarily got their utilities turned on for use and occupancy inspection. And then, for whatever reason, we couldn't turn it off, and their business license wasn't approved. And they're still active. That business is now, both of them have gone out of business, but it was several years of dealing with the fact they don't have an active business license. Their utilities got turned on. We can't turn them off, and we're just going to wait it out.
Now, is that something we can, as a commission, help with?
You may. That will need some research from Elizabeth.
Yeah.
We're already working towards that. Co-compliance worked with the Customer Service Division, Donna and her team. And what happens, they usually give them like two weeks' time with utilities, temporary utilities. If they do not, and her team checks to see if they have the business license after the two weeks. If they do not, she sends an email over to co-compliance, and we cite them to get a business license. So we give them two weeks to get the license.
Yeah, but if it's a temporary, temporary should mean you either get it permanently or you don't get it.
Correct. And if they do not get it, then we cite them, give them a notice of violation.
But they still have the power.
They still have the power.
So maybe that's it. If it's temporary... I mean, I don't want people to lose power in their houses. I'm not trying to be cruel, but I want people to follow the rules.
Yeah. But we can't turn them off, because we had that problem with no license, no lights. Initially, when we started, there's no license, no lights. They wanted us to turn the utilities off if they didn't get a business license. Legal was not for it, because, and even I, it was some life, health, safety issues where you just have to be very careful with turning people lights off.
And the other caveat is that the code, remember, the code, this is most specific to residential. Co-compliance activities are against the property owner.
Yeah.
But we had numerous tenants falling victim of the fact that the property owner didn't have a business license. They have the utilities in their name, the tenant. But the only, the person responsible for making sure they maintained their lights was the property owner. And so they're, no fault of their own, they have a valid lease. They've signed things in good faith. They've moved in. They're expecting to have lights and utilities. We turned it on, and it turns out. So it has been a challenge. turned it on and it turns out, so it has been a challenge.
Yeah, so it's like a catch 22.
Or when it's in the owner's name or the tenant's name?
When the utilities are in the tenant's name.
And you really can't turn, I mean, really.
I'm not, I don't want to turn off these lights.
Don't let that get out, right?
Right? No, that's not what I'm saying. I just wanted to understand the process.
In the perfect world, before you ever put out the shingle to say, I'm going to rent my property, you apply for your business license, whether as a commercial rental or residential rental, you have your use and occupancy inspection, it all passes, the license is issued, and then you put out your shingle saying, I want to rent it.
Right.
It's the complete reverse here. It's usually that the rent sign goes out, oh, I found the tenant, I've already signed the lease, I'm ready for them to move in, then I'm going to talk to the city about a business license. And we do the best we can, but we do get beaten up and we do, do come across as being uncustomer service friendly because often, many times, on the commercial side, the use that has moved in is not allowed.
Right.
Or it requires special steps, either administrative use permit, a staff level, or a conditional land use permit, which has to go before a board.
Let me ask you, I have just along the same lines, all the lights are on. Inspections, when I'm, let's say I bought a new thing to rent out, new residential rental, and I need a license and I apply for it, can you come in, can the city, because I've just heard from, for our legal that we can no longer do interior inspections for code enforcement, which just makes me crazy.
Yes.
Because that's health and life. I mean, if the toilet's not flushing, if the wires are exposed, I, I'm going to work on the legislature on that one next year. But, but when I first get my rental license, you can come in, is my understanding, and make sure there's a smoke detector and a, not even then.
It appears that when you first apply for your business license to rent your residential property and there is no tenant in the property.
Right.
We have some legal grounds to be able to do the inspection that first time. But once tenants are in place, we are very hard pressed and challenged to ever.
Unless the tenant says it's okay to come in or the landlord says it's okay to come in.
Right.
We have to get permission, which, because I mean, you know, is there egress? Is there, are locks being locked from the outside, you know, bedrooms with outside locks, things like that? That's just, because we always did interior inspections, I guess. The world has changed.
Not always. We did them beginning 2012 forward for like six or seven years, and then we started getting challenged more and more because, you know, on this team is pretty good at finding problems with these properties.
Sure.
You've got to fix them up.
That's a shame.
The other aspect too is that we've had people, tenants, call us to do the inspections. We find such egregious issues that it has led to possibly a condemnation or a red tag or they need to evict the person and then they have nowhere to live. And so that's, that's really pretty awful. And it doesn't, because we went in and saw egregious issues that maybe make a life safety issue for the tenant, it doesn't force the property owner to do anything.
Well, you start a code case.
Right, but that code case could go on for a long time.
Who's first? Mr. Diaz.
Right, or like somebody approached me recently that they were upset they didn't get their UNC because they said poor customer service, but you know, typically we want them to use contractors to renovate buildings and do it legally, but, yeah.
What do UNC?
Use and occupancy. Yeah. But, yeah, and in another scenario to think about too, which I'm sure happens is August comes around, you send out the mailers, they don't respond, they don't reply for a business license, but the business continues and, you know, there's not a whole, my understanding is there's not a whole lot of options that we can do to really double check or verify that a tenant is still in there or, I mean, there's really not much you can do.
Well, I mean, I will say our, our young lady who does check on the license that haven't been renewed, if she doesn't get a response from anybody, she turns it over to code and they'll go out and visit. And it usually, and we have, you know, probably maybe 20% of her contacts out there in the world end up leading to a code violation in a letter, but it doesn't mean that that building, that a business ceases to operate.
Right.
You've got to go through the whole co-compliance process, which is typically at a minimum for the whole thing, 180 days.
But sometimes it's vacant.
Yeah.
Business may long, no longer be there and it's vacant and then we start a case for the vacant registry, so they have to do something with it.
Right.
Because either a business license or vacant registry. But they will turn it, she generates a report and give it over to code and then the code officer go out and inspect to see exactly what's going on with the property if somebody says we will sign. It depends on the situation, case by case situation.
Okay. And before all that, I was curious, I wonder if you keep, I'm sure you keep up on this data, but when you do the initial inspection, how many of those, I assume probably a good majority of them involve a re-inspection or that there has to be another visit, multiple, multiple visits until they're correct? And, and I am, I know it's like the million dollar question, I'm all ears on hearing ideas on how do we improve that, that repeat rate? Because if, you only have so many inspectors and if you have to go to the same property six times. No, but it's, it's time and sometimes if they're busy, it's, it's hard to schedule them, you know, they might be two weeks out and that business owner, that's where they complain about, there's poor customer service and it's like, well, you know, your, your exit signs need batteries in them or whatever it is. And if they don't fix it and it, and it requires so many revisits, it just really, it just really drags it out. So how, you know, I'm all ears on how we can improve that.
But that isn't a. Sign would assume that you're inside the building, but what I'm hearing is that we can't go inside the building. Just as you use your.
I'm saying for the initial inspection, like.
You can go in the building for the initial inspection before you.
For commercials.
Only commercials.
Commercials we definitely can. As I mentioned earlier, if.
It's insane.
Mayor, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, if the project or the property is applying for a new residential business license and there is no one in.
In there, you can go in.
We likely have pretty strong grounds to go into it.
Okay.
And we normally do. It's a problem once for someone living there, even without a business license, getting in is a challenge. But we have a checklist of all things you have to comply with and that's available online. I don't know if anybody reads it beforehand.
Because I always let the city come and inspect my, they go inside, they go outside and why not, right?
You don't have to.
But I do, Ms. Mike.
Thank you. So this is two questions. So if you have a Section 8 voucher, Section 8 is allowed to go in and inspect your property to make sure that it's got all the life and safety issues. So how can they get away with it, but yet we, the governing entity, cannot? That's more of a question for legal, not for you guys. It's not a pop question. Even though it's a federal agency? Just because they're, they're paying the renter?
It's an assumption.
Okay. If we could look into that, I would like to know.
I can explain part of it, I've been involved with Section 8. Essentially, you know, Section 8 is paying a portion of the rent to the landlord on behalf of the tenant. So by default, they are a party to the lease.
Okay.
And the leasing has rights to have people look at stuff.
Right.
So if I'm paying, say, half of Commissioner May's rent and I'm not happy with her living situation, I might demand to go in and see why she's not happy where she's living.
Okay.
And that's the, that's the difference.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Now, this brings me to the thing that I've asked about three years ago. City issued for rent signs and decals, so when code drives by and they see a red sign that came from Ace Hardware that says for rent, we know that they're not licensed. So I've been asking and I've been patient. Am I asking for an update now? But this is something.
Part of it, and part of it is with legal, just because there's a for rent sign from Ace Hardware in the room does not mean it doesn't have a business license. And conversely, if they had a city license in the window, someone's still going to have to check and verify, is that license for that property? Does it have a number? And we haven't worked off all the logistics because Alicia did quite a bit of work with our outside provider to find out how much it was going to cost to have stickers or signs that matched up with a business license that we could somehow readily identify as it being, they'd have to change color every year.
Cities do it for alarms all the time. Cities do it for the alarms that goes, that goes on your window that shows you have an alarm permit with a code on it. So it's not rocket science. And I really do think that it will help our code division and it will help tenants know that it's a licensed, clean, real upstanding landlord versus renting from Joe Bob who won $700 for one bed and, and, you know, with three other people in a bedroom. And it's a great way to get rid of the landlords.
You wouldn't know that anyway. Once, they can't, what I'm, what we're hearing is if, let's say I have a, I've got a tenant and I want to put a rent, and I just, you know, my tenant leaves, I need a new tenant. I put a for rent sign out. Unless the city knows that I don't have a tenant in there, the city would have to call my number and say, hi, I hear we have an apartment for rent. Is there anybody, can I go look at it? And then go in like undercover and see if there's anybody in there and then do an inspection.
No, but it would also know, we would also know that if they don't have the right rental license up with the sticker, we know that they haven't followed the process, that they're not licensed. That is the biggest issue.
Someone, we're still going to have to be able to see the license and we'll hopefully work through this, but if we have a condominium building that has multiple people that have rental, this Lake Worth Beach rental licenses, there would be a different sticker in every window. However, they're probably all going to be the same color. If you do it by year.
Well, I've sent you other cities that do it. I know it can be done. My, my last question, and I, I understand what you're saying, Mayor, but to me, it's always, if other cities are doing stuff, I, I go through Facebook and I look at rentals that are listed and then I look at their addresses and 80% of the time, they don't have a business license. But yet on Facebook, I, I put in code request, but who's going to sit there and do that? You know, the bottom line is, is we need, we need the realtors in town to be better players and we really need to bring them to the table. And maybe that's something the Business Advisory Board can help work on because it's not fair that somebody signs a lease and not knowing that they don't have a license, that the landlord doesn't. So that's part of the, the problem. And if you look at any of our Facebook pages for Lake Worth, just take a scroll through and just pick one, a couple addresses.
Yeah.
And then Google and see if they have a business license.
We'll also encourage all tenants out there in the, the world, you can go to our website, go to the business license section, click on the click to gov and put, type in the address and you can find out for yourself whether there's a business license or not. Yeah. Or the, or the real estate person.
I think we also have a rule that you can't. That's okay, go ahead.
No, I was just thinking like if I were a real estate person, it would, it would behoove me to check if my listing has a license. So it really.
Well, if you have a chance, look at, see how many listings there are for properties that are for sale that can be Airbnbs in the city of Lake Worth Beach.
Oh, my God. There's one across the street from me for sale now.
There are dozens of them.
It's been for sale for a long time and it's not selling because they're asking over half a million dollars for a 25-foot locked cottage. And then I noticed on the sign, you know, two units.
Really?
And I saw it come down. Now, I didn't call in and I was about to, but then the sign came, but I mean, that's blame, with all due respect to realtors, I mean, I, I know that that happens. I know that, you know, the potential for Airbnb, for a.
And we encourage everybody who buys a property in the city, call our office to look at the property file, which shows the business license history, what has been done with a permit, whether there's one unit or two units allowed there. Because a number of people who walked in who've already closed and said, I'm ready to rent my, my ADU.
And an.
That never got a license or it was a carport at some point in history and all of a sudden it's a, a bedroom with a kitchen, it's just a lot.
I have to say, I'm so proud of myself because when I bought my house in 1989, I knew there was a problem. And somewhere in my property file, there's the little pink message which says Betty Resch called to find out if it was a legal rental and it was. So it just, right, you just have to.
And we're scanning all that information, so your little note is probably in perpetuity now in the electronic file for that property.
Oh, good, yeah, I, yeah. Because I knew that, my cousin was renting a place and like possums were coming up through the holes in the floor. This is a long time ago, but just like, so where are we?
Forty-eight minutes, one's like, woo!
So we've gone over parts of it, like the three parts that are in the business license. It also covers legal non-conformities. Under our code, if something has been continually used and had to maintain a business license and it's no longer allowed in that district, but it was legally allowed at some point and had a business license, it continue as a non-conformity. If your business license lapses and you don't hold it out for that use, you can, you lose your non-conformity. That includes use in terms of a type of business and it could include the lack, the loss of the use of being able to rent an accessory dwelling unit for rental purposes versus as Mayor Resch described, as your friends are staying there or your in-laws. So it is imperative to be important for you to maintain your business license to preserve any non-conformities you may have on the property.
How long? How long can they, like, if it's a 30-day lapse, like, do we give them a grace period?
It's a six-month lapse.
Okay.
Or a combined period of a certain amount over three years. But under, there's a legal case that Elizabeth brought to our attention. If you hold it out there for lease for the non-conforming use, it can stay vacant for longer than six months, but you have to actively try to be pursuing the non-conformer use that's covered under the business license.
Okay, because of the, I don't know if that's the same case, but there's a case that came out, which is if you've never had, which might be just a different way of saying it, if you've never held out the business for any other purpose, it's indefinite, it's until you.
But then you still have to maintain your business license. Not every city has a business license as complicated as ours, but.
Oh, good. Thank you for adding work to your.
They all, they all have three parts, but one of the issues, you know, why we created the use and occupancy certificate is to establish those non-conformities so they were permanently recorded.
So we know.
These are the non-conformities that are allowed to continue on your property as demonstrated by your use and occupancy certificate.
So part of our ordinance, which is not necessarily statutory, is that you have to maintain the business license in order to maintain that use. Even if, so if you let it lapse, but you don't rent it to anybody else, you lose it because of the business?
If you actively advertise it for the use, then likely it can continue. But if you're not actively trying to pursue that use, you let the business license lapse and you sell the property to some new person and that comes in 18 months later and wants to reestablish that use that was non-conforming, that hasn't been there without a license and has not been active for a significant period of time, you can't get it back.
And that's our ordinance. That's interesting.
Okay. No lights are on?
Here's the business, Lake Worth Beach business license process.
It's not that bad. It's not that bad.
Ms. Wilson and Ms. Bryant kind of went through this, but there are a lot of steps when applying for your new business license, which can lead in some cases all the way to a review by one of the advisory boards for conditional land use. And so it behooves everybody, call our office and find out if a use is allowed and under what review provisions it has to go through to be established. Please do not make assumptions on anything.
Is every city's, does it all look like this?
Yes.
Because I'm pretty smart and if I saw that on our website, I'd be like, next city. I'm not joking.
If you go through it though, if you go through it.
I mean, I've been through, I've been through the process. But I'm just saying, as a new business owner, I'm looking.
The only part that most cities do not have is the use and occupancy inspection, so those bottom five bubbles fall off. But the top part.
Right. So you complete your application, so you complete your application bef, if I wanted to, if I wanted to, if I was going to rent a store and I wanted to know if that was, you know, what I want to do, my donut shop is owned for that area, can I just come into the city and ask?
We encourage it. We ask them to contact planning and zoning first, just to make sure, before they even apply.
I have a friend today that the city's in charge of a corner, they asked us to zone if this, whatever.
Two fifty.
Is that the letter?
But their, their question was quite, kind of loaded.
It was, no, and that's what I, that was, I didn't respond to it, but that was my, well, they're asking, you know, you have to look it up and it's staff time, so.
And, and it's not just looking it up, it's like, were all those units legally put there? Had they maintained a business license? Are there any open permits? Are there any co-compliance issues? So we look at all of that for that zoning verification letter and I included all the parties of all the divisions on responding back because it involved that, that particular collection, we're going to have to talk to the building division, co-compliance division, the planning and preservation division, as well as business license. And then prepare a letter, which planning and zoning or planning and preservation provides that.
And if I wanted to rent a place on 10th Avenue North and I could call the city and say, I want to open a donut shop on there, I could get an answer without any turnover?
Usually.
Which is really what zones, what's.
Right. We've also encouraged owners who have multiple tenant properties in zones that allow multiple uses.
Right.
To come talk to us about blanket approvals.
Right.
Like come in, apply for all the uses that may be appropriate for that site as a conditional land use, take it through the planning and zoning board or the preservation board as appropriate, get your blanket approval and your tenants don't have any problem. We have land, tenant, landlords that absolutely refuse to do that and then stick it on the tenant who's trying to get located. Oh, I, you know, and we have, we've met with certain individuals numerous times saying, saying, it really would help you get tenants faster if you went ahead and got this approval for your whole property. And that has happened on a lot of them and other ones it hasn't. We dealt with another one today. You're going to have to get an AUP, Administrative Use Permit. But that owner could have thought, when we first suggested it, almost a decade ago, get a blanket approval for all these types of uses. And they come in and they'll be reviewed really quickly. And this poor tenant, who doesn't really understand the whole process, is having to go through the whole thing. It's a challenge. But we have, we have been rather successful on probably two dozen properties getting blanket approvals for conditional land use. A really good example is Arbor Square Shopping Center. It came through and got a blanket approval for all kinds of uses. So then now it zips through the tenant. We can tell the tenant exactly what they have to provide for the use that's been allowed. The Lake Worth Business Center, the big industrial new project, has a blanket approval for a whole variety of conditional uses.
So is it a letter with, this is what you can do there?
Well, and you would think that that would help the landlords rent it faster and easier. So why wouldn't they do it?
So we got that little process. Now, the newest division in the department, which was created like seven fiscal years ago, when our economic development, I think at the time Director, that position was eliminated. We decided it was appropriate to have a division within the department that brought together all the things that are covered by not only our concierge service, but how to help facilitate businesses coming into the city and implementing the strategic goals and objectives of the city. So a list there of all the things that are included in that division is that we created the Affordable Workforce Housing Program. We created the Transfer Development Rights Program. The Sustainable Bonus Incentive Program Tier Two comes out of this division because it does entail incentives that increase density, intensity, and height for projects. You also adopted our Sustainable Qualitative and Performance Standards Program, which establishes carbon neutrality or carbon goals and development that's supportive of the goals and objectives that you have established in terms of a sustainable community. We have the Economic Investment Incentive Program, which you all have on hold, which is okay. We have the Economic Infrastructure Investment Program, whereby if the utility departments have infrastructure in their CIP, but it's scheduled to happen at a date after which a project could benefit from it, that project can request to put that infrastructure in on our behalf and we will pay them back. There have been a number of projects, including the Gulfstream, that have benefited from it. We have an Economic Development Electric Incentive Rate Program, which provides an incentive to encourage new businesses to locate here as long as they're creating new load and new full-time equivalent positions. We've only had several businesses apply for it. But it does make our commercial rates for at least three to four years commercially competitive with FPL. After which, we're not competitive anymore. The sale of surplus properties
Excuse me, William, doesn't that have to be at a certain capacity, though, for that program?
A hundred and fifty KW and you have to create 10 equivalent positions.
Okay.
It's not, but FPN's, I think, is 300 and they have to create, I think, it's 20. Ours, we cut it in half. So smaller businesses can benefit from it. This office does pick up the sale of city-owned surplus properties, which we're probably going to talk about a little bit one-on-one with you all next week because the unsolicited proposal process is a little unclear. We've wasted quite a bit of staff time on maybe negotiating with people that maybe you all might not want to hear from in terms of city-owned property. So we're going to revisit that. We have adopted, as per the Business Development Board, confidentiality agreements. And there's a private investment incentive negotiations, which really collaborate and pull together. We have negotiations with maybe the CRA, the Business Development Board, the county. Some things are taken, are kept out of the sunshine until it becomes a real project. And there are a number of people that have benefited from this because they really didn't want their negotiations and due diligence to be out in the public because somebody may come in and try to jack up the price on their property. So that's what that, that division kind of includes. And much of that budget is reported to the state as our economic development expenditures. Because any incentive monies we provide and whatever we spend in further economic development is reported to the state on an annual basis, on an annual fiscal year basis.
And those confidentiality waivers are
Agreements.
Agreements are not public record? Can we do that?
It takes the negotiations out of the public eye until it becomes a real project. We haven't had use of many of them. We had one for a cosmetics company. This was a long time ago. We, I think the Gulfstream had it for a portion of time when they were talking to me and also going through the sales pitches because CBRE Ellis had every potential purchaser of the Gulfstream property come to our office and talk to me about, this is what's allowed, this is what you have to go through, this is the potential, before they would put their proposals
It makes sense to have that. I mean, I'm not, yeah.
And then once there was an announcement that so-and-so's got a contract and looking into it, then it came out of the, it came into the public eye. So that was released. So, and there's other things that that little division picks up. You know, oftentimes I get to serve as the adjunct architect for the city. I'm good, bad, or indifferent.
The what?
The adjunct architect for the city.
You are?
Well, I'm a licensed architect, interior designer. So on projects that involve new buildings, I usually get roped into the evaluation committees. Don't have to be, but
But that's your happy place.
Yeah.
Sometimes until the prices come in and I'm like, oh, boy, and
Value engineering comes into play.
Well, no, it's, and, you know, some of the, I think, you know, with some of the proposals that have come into the city manager's office about what someone wants to do and what they think it's going to cost. And I'm like, they're on some kind of crack. It's going to cost way more than that. That kind of happened with the precursor of the Gulfstream, where they were going to build a parking garage. It didn't cost them money at all. And so then we pick up whatever we're asked to sort of pick up. Because oftentimes, because we're in the public eye or in the public face, sometimes people just don't really know where to go. And there isn't a clear definitive answer. So we do, and I commend my executive team, which includes Alicia, Yolanda, as well as Scott and Barry, who's our building official, and Annie, that we do make every attempt to find an answer for somebody. And we don't just put them on, okay, you just need to call this department. And we also, we provide a concierge review service, which I don't know of any other city that does this. If you are interested in buying a property and you have an idea, it could be on a piece of paper, we will provide a free concierge review to go over what opportunities, constraints, challenges, possibilities you may have on that property and pull the entire site plan review team representative from each department that's involved to help you walk through that process. And it's free and we normally can pull it together within 10 days. People have taken advantage of it a lot, especially virtually sending us in something, can you give us some preliminary feedback? Because our goal is when you submit an application for anything, especially entitlements, that it is complete and sufficient and well-prepared as it possibly can be. Because time is money. And if we can help you save time in your applications, we try to do that. Because we cannot offer, in much sense, any kind of financial incentive to come here. But we can save you time, especially in the building division. You may not think so, but I'll give you an example. I live in a historic district, an historic house, and I was replacing my roof like-for-like. I won't mention what city, but everybody knows where it is. It took my contractor and me about 13 weeks to get a permit approved.
For your like-for-like roof?
Yes. And I'm like, I wish people knew what I went through. And I do this for a living and it's taken us this long. So yes, sometimes it can take a little bit of time. But the more complete your application is, and ours was complete, it's just, I don't really know what happened. The city wanted me to have two separate building permits because I have two separate buildings on the same parcel. And I couldn't understand why I didn't have two property control numbers. I'm like, exactly. You know where I live. We won't mention them.
I mean, the area, I don't, yeah.
Well, it's a particular city. And they wanted me to provide both of my property control numbers for my two properties that are on the same property.
But there's only one control number.
Exactly. I was like, we don't know how to provide that information because it doesn't exist. Yes, my two properties have different addresses, but I'm on a corner. So anyway, I get many of the frustrations people have. And we've tried our very best to eliminate as many of those as possible. And our staff, I think, is more accessible for in-person meetings than any other city I've ever been involved with.
Yeah, I had a few windows replaced a couple of years ago, store windows, and they kept failing. They kept, and I was like, oh, darn. And so Michael said, just meet me at the house. And he said, number one, he said, how did you, you picked the worst company in the state of Florida to do your windows? Like, that's my vetting process. And he took one turn with a screwdriver and then with his fingers just unscrewed all the screws. He goes, he says, your windows would have been fine laying on the floor. So you have to, you know, take that into consideration as well. Everybody's here. Mr. Diaz, let's start with you.
Yeah, I had a question going back to business licenses. But now Yolanda's not here. I guess now that's more of a comment because it was mentioned, and I do have questions regarding strategic planning. But, you know, it was mentioned, the word slumlord was used. And I think that's obviously a substantial problem in our city. But a conversation needs to be had. Probably not tonight because it's going to be a big conversation. The people who do, you know, people who apply for licenses and are in that world, that might take care of some of those situations. But I think the bigger problem, especially in like our migrant community, are the no lease, cash, month-to-month, word-by-mouth. And those are rampant. And that's where the vast majority of those predatory rentals are. And I kind of know the legal answer to this. Like, we're fairly limited on what we can do. But I think we should have a serious conversation about addressing that. And I think it does go hand in hand with every time, every time.
Hold on. You know, one of the areas, and Mayor Resch and I have experienced this, one of the areas that is almost impossible to enforce is overcrowding.
Yeah.
However, we can address many of the symptoms that are created or conditions that are created by overcrowding.
Parking.
Parking, a bazillion cars at a property. If we had a parking decal program and you're only giving two parking decals, those cars are going to have to go somewhere else. And you're not going to be able to get a parking decal. So either they're not going to be living there or they're parking their cars at Palm Beach State College and riding a bus in or a bicycle. I don't know.
Well, they have, or they build a house with a garage and they use the garage for storage.
Throw some foam on, and, you know, the example that I think of is, I think it was fairly recently, there was a house fire in a nearby town and there were nine adults and three children. And this was like a townhouse. And, you know, that's why, that's why we can't cut off the power, obviously, because of fire suppression, but
Keep in mind that in a single-family residence, you can have no more than three unrelated people living in it. However, under the Minimum Housing Code, if you've got a three-bedroom house and you have certain-sized bedrooms and a den, you can ramp up and you could have potentially 10 or 11 people living in a fairly small confined area, as long as they're related.
It's my cousin. Prove it's not.
Yeah, and that's, you know, I think that's a conversation we really need to have.
All right, so bringing up the overcrowding thing. Well, let's say there's a house and obviously there's too many people because the cars, you know, too many cars on there. What can we do?
Need a parking permit program.
But right now, what happens right now is they might get cited for parking on the required landscaping.
Okay.
Parking trucks in the city limits, you could do.
And if there's, technically not. Commercial trucks are not allowed on residential streets.
That's what I'm saying, so you could ticket those.
But those are, those are, those fall under the ticketing of Palm Beach Sheriff's Office because co-compliance cannot ticket on a right-of-way.
She's like, don't bring me into this.
And, you know, the amount of resources we placed on red tagging of vehicles, especially when Mr. Robinson was commissioner, was extraordinary. But then when it was determined that co-compliance officers could not red tag and could not cite those, the number of violations for red tagging came down precipitously. But, you know, PBSO does, only has the staff it has, they would have had to reorient two or three people to keep up with. Because we were doing it like, I think, twice a month as a whole group going out. And we're just going to blanket the city with red tags for parking.
So why can't we do it once a quarter?
Palm Beach Sheriff, the co-compliance officers are legally not allowed to red tag cars.
No, no, I hear you. But I'm saying, but why can't we still enforce it once a quarter? But I guess, once we get the parking decals at all, tiny enough
Ask PBSO.
Okay, so let me understand that, what you just said. So if a car is parked on a public street, code cannot red tag it?
Nope.
It has to be the sheriff's office that either red tags it or tows it?
Well, it has to be red tagged and do notice provided before it can be towed. And we do process the information for PBSO, like, you know, where it is. If it's timed for it to be towed, that does come through our office. And we do the David, which is the regulations on the license plate and registration. But it has to all be signed off on by PBSO and initiated.
And they do respond. I call all the time on cars with no plates.
And luckily, that process is significantly faster than our boot problem. But, but it's similar. And, yeah, and, you know, those are all very valid. But some of the parking concerns I've received and, you know, it's unfortunate until we have a parking permit program or something to that effect, our hands are tied. And I know, William, you hate me using this word, but like sober homes, for example, they, you know, they'll often have many, many cars and the neighbors see it and the cars are parked in the street. And they're legal because they're cars and they're using them every day and they're just using street parking.
So how would that work? Let's take five minutes and talk about parking because it keeps popping up. Let's say, and we're talking about multifamily districts, pretty much? Okay, so let's say, and I live in a multi, you know, some of us do live in a multi. So my house would get two parking stickers. I mean, I'm really just
Conceptually, yes.
Okay, conceptually, okay. So if a friend came to visit, where would they park?
And that's some of the picking, micro conversations that have to take place.
Which becomes a problem.
How many guest parking tags does the person have to, able to get? Maybe you're, I think, at one time in South Beach, you were allowed to get one. And if you didn't have, you went and parked in a public parking lot and paid. And walked over to your friend's house because they have a very good collection of well-distributed parking facilities.
Which we don't.
Hopefully, we will have one day, but we don't right now. But one day we might.
That's not for downtown, but I mean, multifamily goes, you know.
Yeah, a really good example is I know in St. Augustine, when you stay there, when you're close to your downtown district, they have driveways, a lot of houses. But on the street parking, every like X number, I forget what it is, will be like a yellow spot. And the people, you know, they usually have like an ADU, the short-term rental. And they're allotted a certain number of guest passes that they can like hand out.
The other way to deal with it, too, is that your parking decal is required to be displayed at a certain time, say dusk to dawn. So during the day, it's like
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter. But when the lights go out and it's later at night, Palm Beach utilizes this as well as South Beach. That you've got to have your parking decal up there. I think it's like usually 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, which may not be appropriate for Lake Worth Beach. Maybe it's 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM or whatever you come up with. That's the other way to look at it.
So it would be on my windshield like a beach parking sticker?
It needs to be displayed somehow. And you're not going to be given a dedicated space. So you're, we'll probably have zones. As long as you're parked in that zone with that sticker, you'll be okay.
It's interesting. It's interesting. I mean, there's an apartment house across the street from me that's got eight apartments. It's a lot of parking. All right. So, I'm sorry, Ms. May.
But it also might improve our business license compliance because you couldn't get a parking decal for your tenants unless you had a business license.
Right.
Which is why I brought it up for the business license.
It all works together eventually. That's what our goal was with creating this department is somehow we're going to get a synergy where it all works together.
Yeah. And now if we're, if we want to get back to strategic planning, I do have a question on that.
Well, let's have, let Sarah's had her line, me and Sarah have had a line up for a minute.
Okay, so my, number one, you mentioned your building, which I think I love all the staff there. I hate the fact that I have to get buzzed in. Can, why do we have that at your building when there are five people there?
It's the only safety precaution we have to determine.
That's not true. Everybody's behind a glass window when you walk in.
It's not bulletproof and you could easily jump through it.
We are one of the few We are one of the few places that you have to go.
You have to go through a metal detector to get into West Palm Beach's City Hall.
You can walk into the county office, they have nothing.
Okay, hey, I'm just going to state, from me, it's very welcoming once you walk in. But it's not welcoming to have to stand out there and either answer questions on why you're there. It's just, I think that city buildings belong to the people and should be accessible. It's not like what we have out here where we have certain characters who can just walk in and we don't have anybody out here because everyone's behind doors. Mr. Brown, I see you want to answer the question.
Without getting into specifics, there have been issues in the past that have made our employees that sit up front in that building very uncomfortable. our employees that sit up front in that building very uncomfortable, and it was a very unsafe situation, I'll say, on multiple occasions. There is a reason that that is now in place, and it's for safety of our employees, and we cannot have the same situation that has happened multiple times ever before. So we had to take the proper protocol to make sure we're keeping our staff safe. So I understand what you're saying, but I just wanted to make sure I put that out there. There is a reason for that.
Maybe we should just put, I mean, I guess it's just not, to me, there's the little pushboard with all the little things that people can leave up. It's just, it could be a little more welcoming when you first walk up. That's all I have. There was a gentleman who stood up here on Tuesday, who lives at the Lucerne Lofts, the artist lofts, and he talked about parking. So, being the CRI liaison, I talked to Joan the next day, and let her know that this person had concerns, that they only get one parking spot, yada, yada, yada. Then I thought to myself, if we don't own Lucerne, and that's F dot, how are we enforcing four-hour parking if we don't own, can you clarify that for me? Because I was really confused. And I asked Joan, well, why can't they just park at the Hatch Building, which is literally right across the street, instead of parking there? So I just wanted some clarity on how we can enforce that if we don't own the street.
All up and down Lake.
Lake, Lake Lucerne, we enforce all downtown as well.
Right. What I'm asking, is it through an inter-local agreement? Is it, okay.
Yes.
All right. So we do have the capacity to say resident parking only for the artist lofts if we wanted to, and that little four-by-four section, there's four car lengths right there, in front of that one building.
That's where you run into issues, because just like on, people who want to reserve spaces like out in front of their house, because they only want to be able to park in front of their home, and not have other people park in front of their home, it is a public right-of-way, whether it's owned by DOT or by the city, and typically you don't designate who can and can't park within the public right-of-way for a private residence.
Because I was just trying to find an easier fix for this one building.
Well, just my feeling is that that was a building, it was specifically approved to cater to artists who were of lower income or workforce income. It was argued before the board that they could have a special dispensation to only have one off-street parking space per unit. There is some guest parking behind one part of it, and that was what was bought. And again, it gets back to an email that I sent to somebody today about parking, is that how it's managed after it's approved, if they choose to ignore how it was approved, I don't know what to do.
But I do think that our, I'm, I think that our parking, I don't think we should do that. I think there should be two, I don't think we should cut down on parking. We know what's going on at the mid, and we hope that it doesn't happen again. And I understand what you said about people letting, I think the mid should probably hopefully take a little control over who's parking in their parking lot.
Well, the mid will likely get better once the construction, Deco Green and all the construction parking on the street goes away.
I mean, we do have an issue, though, I mean, I hate to bring up an unpleasant subject, but the whole Gulfstream condo thing, where we're telling people that they, I mean, I don't understand how that happened, and I think it's unfortunate.
Yeah, the.
Well, it's something we don't do.
We don't do. No, that should be taken out immediately.
Well, I'll just try to clear some of the misconceptions about the Gulfstream Towers. The Gulfstream Towers were apartments that were part of the overall Gulfstream Hotel complex. The city had no legal jurisdiction over the review of it being converted to condos, and whether those condos were sold with parking or not. Every initial purchaser had the opportunity to read the condo dots, which says you don't get any parking, even in the parking lot across the street, that was, I mean, across the alley. And unfortunately, very few people read books that are this big.
Right.
So they should be getting ticketed every night.
And so there's, I mean, the city's gotten blamed for that over and over again, and the city had no role and had no legal right to require the parking.
No, we want them to take all the.
We agree with you completely.
I'm going back in history, but now we probably do need to try to help them do something.
Well, they bought, you know, they bought a condo without parking. And they have, and I, you know, with all due respect to the Gulfstream condos, you know, they now take up quite a few spaces in front of a publicly, a public park where people want to park, and.
Two rows, two rows. It's ridiculous.
And I, you know, I mean, it's, and it's to the people in Gulfstream, it sounds very harsh to say, well, you bought something without a parking space, but it is, in fact, the truth. And they got used to parking across the alley, and while they could, so I don't know what the answer is, but I, and I don't think we voted on it. I think that was something that just happened while, when we first started.
No.
Not under your.
Yep.
And I, it was kind of sneaky that it happened the way it did.
Yes.
So, having said that, what?
It shall be addressed. It's part of the, obviously with the Gulfstream coming onboard and everything else, we're going to have to address that entire area anyway, and those parking areas in front of, on Golf View and everything else.
And they're public parking.
Unfortunately, it's one of those things that we're going to have to address as part of this overall process when we're doing the site layout and everything, so it's not been forgotten.
And it's an urban, it's going to be more of an urban area, and if you live in a downtown urban area, you don't generally have two cars, three cars. You're, it's urban. So, anyway. My question, though, is, oh, my, the other thing is for the artist loft, so they were originally designed to have one person live there, right?
No, they're, some of them are, I think, three bedrooms. They were designed to be families that would only have one car.
Whoever had any kids they had, they would only have one car.
Okay, so it was understood that when you are a tenant in this building, or you are the owner of this building, that you get one spot, and if you need more, that's on you. And on the two sides of it, the side streets, that's not four-hour parking, they can park there, right? Okay. The other question.
There is some, are some guest spaces behind one component of the artist lofts. The ones that are constructed between Lake and Lucerne only have one parking space per unit, like it's like a semi-open carport. The guest parking for that project is across the street on the back of the property, adjacent to F. And I'm sure, they're not an equal number to the number of units. It's maybe, I think it averages out onsite parking is like one and a half spaces per unit.
But it seems like they're using those guest spaces as their extra spots, not for guests.
Do they have garages? Do they have garages?
They have, it's like semi-open.
Like a carport.
It's a carport. Some of them are garages. Some of them have been illegally converted to usable space, and they've lost their parking.
Right. Or store, I mean, that's what, people use their garages for storage.
Okay, so, anywho.
Before you move off of that.
Oh, Mr. Brown.
Because I didn't want to bring it up the other night, but since William kind of went into it, you know, with them initially being live-work spaces, where you could live on the second floor, have your studio, whatever you're doing on the first floor, they weren't really set up for families and everything, so.
Or going to work. There's your work. Walk downstairs.
And as you mentioned, and I was going to go into it, but on the side streets, there is no, so I, it wasn't really clear the other night if he was parking on Lucerne.
Yes.
Because there's not that issue on the side streets. So there is that. Again, I don't know what that's like.
He wants to park right in, on Lucerne.
I understand, but again, you know, I, I don't know how far that is away from the particular unit he's in, or how crowded those are at nighttime, if they're all filled up or not.
All the front doors face a, either lake or Lucerne.
Yeah, but I didn't know on the side street if those are packed at nighttime, if there's no parking on the side streets or not.
But I mean, it's, you got to think about the kind of building, or home you choose. Like, for example, I have a boat on a trailer. I would love to keep it in my driveway, if I could actually back it up, which I can't do. But, or right in front of my house, right? And some people do, but I know that I can't. So when I purchased the boat, I purchased it knowing that I was going to have to find storage for it. You know, if I left it in front of my house and you guys ticketed me, that's, that's not your fault. I knew that when I moved in. So I think there's some personal responsibility here, and I do feel for the man, because I'm a teacher, he's a teacher, I understand his plight, but the choice of living was live-work, as in walk downstairs, not live, get in your car, go to work, with your wife going to work and your kid going to daycare.
So they had two cars?
They have two cars, two adults that don't work in the work lab. They're both, no, neither one of them work, work there. She does art there, and she is a professional artist, but it's not like that's where she goes to work.
She has an outside job?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's, not to get anyone's personal business out, but I mean, it's just not the, we're not going to change the parking situation because of your particular situation. And I think that's what we got to worry about. We can't just start changing little things all over for specific people, you know? And I would love to, but it would be complete chaos, and it's not fair. It's not equitable. It came with restrictions. It was a CRA project, right? It wasn't like it was just a regular market rate thing. But William, the other, for the parking, so it's, I do remember asking, and hopefully at some point we can see, the current regulations of development units and parking numbers. Okay. My other question for you is, in your department, are you fully staffed?
Oh, no.
Okay, what are you missing?
We are very close. We are missing one person in the building division, one person in the planning and preservation division, we, actually two, because we have an intern position, but I think we're getting close to filling that. And then in the co-compliance division, we are probably, I think we're down four officers.
Wow. How many do we have?
Eleven altogether.
But we're down four? So we're at like nine?
Or seven.
Seven.
I don't do math.
Do you know, I mean, it's not a pop quiz. If you don't know, you don't know. Do you know what that salary is?
For the co-compliance officer?
Yeah.
Well, because we haven't got a union negotiation, or a union contract signed, actually, I can't really tell you what the salary is. I could tell you what it was.
You tell me what it was.
Correct, 41.
Okay.
And we.
I'm looking for a second job. No, but I think, I mean, I'm so rule-oriented, can't you imagine me with a clipboard?
No.
I'd be psycho.
I think the starting salary was like at 1974 an hour, which is around 41, almost 42.
Okay, and the other question is, as the director of that department, would you have any issues with GPS being put in the vehicles that your people drive?
I have advocated for, year after year, it has to be negotiated.
No, it does not.
I've been told it has to be negotiated.
You've been told wrong. It does not.
Not do this in public.
No, 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 but I don't mean to be so adamant, but that's not true.
Well, thank you, Jesus.
Right? So you're okay with that as a director?
Totally.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I guess you'll talk to our attorney about that. I mean, I don't know why you're, I don't know what you're, I'm not, I don't really rule on that, so.
A portion of that is correct, and a portion of that is incorrect. So there are different portions, like, for instance, for our solid waste recycling, depending on what the actual job is. GPS these days, ours also has the ability to, there are cameras, there's internal cameras, there's external cameras. That's when you kind of, especially with the internal cameras that face the drivers, that's where you kind of get into a different situation.
No, 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 I just want to monitor where the car is.
Regular GPS, it just shows your location. There's GPS that shows breadcrumbs, so you know exactly where they've been. There's GPS that actually shows how long the idle, there's all kinds of things. So depending on what you're talking about, it could actually involve the union or not. For just our white fleet, which is basically our half-ton and under, we wouldn't necessarily need all of that. We need that for our heavy equipment for solid waste recycling, for example, for public works. He's not going to need that.
Right. I mean, if I were, if I were the head of the code people, and I needed to know where they were, I would like to be able to know where they are, without having to drive around and find them.
Already having those conversations, and I already have information that came in today around one o'clock.
Yay, thank you.
I just haven't had a chance to push it forward yet, but.
No breadcrumbs. Thank you. I didn't mean to.
That's okay, because one of, one of the capacities of the newer system that we're going is that if we know what inspections are, the AI of the thing could help us map out the most efficacious route through the city to do inspections, and that could be somewhat quantified and evaluated by the GPS.
Yeah, and. And honestly, for safety, if they don't come back, we need to know where they are in case we have to go find them.
We have plenty of residents who are more than happy to tell us where they are. There's a lot out of them out there.
But without relying on the residents, it would be safe to know where our cars are.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Diaz, his light is on.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Diaz. He's very.
Thank you. The, you know, the staffing question is a good segue to what I wanted to bring up on the strategic planning. If, if we receive a complaint here, which we receive many, one that is often repeated is how the time for permitting can take a while. Somebody approached me last night, for example, I had a conversation with a GC who had, has up to 12 weeks on something on a house that they're working on, but, and, you know, trying to navigate that, because there's always more to the story, and you never know, but, and I understand how your office is staffed. And I just kind of want to get a better understanding. When you get a number of these strategic plans, and you're, you know, it takes you, it takes Scott, maybe Annie sometimes to, like, does it take you out of commission? Like, when you're working.
We only have one strategic plan, which, no offense, you guys have not updated.
Right.
The city has a strategic plan with goals and objectives. The strategic component of what I'm doing is strategically looking at the designs that we have come in, and how they comply with what we've established in comprehensive plan, strategic plan, and land development regulations, and also by policy direction that you've provided us, such as with the adoption of the Affordable Housing Program.
Right. So the question is, you know, is there like a week where maybe you get quite a few of these requests, and it pulls you too thin, you know? Like, you just, you find yourself not having the staff to kind of keep up with the backlog of the other permits?
We are a staff that's really focused on what's called current planning, what is coming in the door, either that way or not. We are woefully inadequate in the area of long-term or comprehensive planning. We rely on consultants, as you are aware. Chen Moore and Yosakirai has been working with us for over a decade. She will be initiating our carbon neutrality element for the comp plan later this month. Her team is completing the open space recreation master plan probably in that few months. WGI did our mobility safety plan. And then, you know, the next thing is probably going to be neighborhood planning, which we've been trying to do for six years, but we just don't have the internal staff capacity to manage the consultant to do all the work. We are chipping away at it as best we can. You are a city that is a bit stressed when it comes to the covering all the salaries for all the things we would like to do, so it makes better sense for us to hire a consultant in than actually have a full-time staff person. I will tell you, we have been trying, since Mr. McGrew left, to hire an individual. We've changed the job description. We're now calling it a landscape planner. We have yet to have anybody apply who is remotely qualified to do that job. And that job, I think it starts in the mid-50s and could go higher based on, you know, how many degrees and certifications you have. And we're, we're relying on an outside consultant to help us, and we are pitching in here and there, but we still are not competitive as an employee, employer of choice based on our salaries and benefits.
Are you able to at least, like, if you get a permit that's maybe a little bit simpler, like a pool permit, or like a fence fix, can you, like, kind of, are you able to focus on that and like kind of get those through the door?
We have a priority list and a check off, and certain people are scheduled for certain parts of the day or the week to focus on the smaller, more simple permits. The time it takes to review a permit is directly related to the quality of information submitted. And my staff spends most of its time saying, where is, here's your checklist, it has 10 things on it, you provided four. And then you provided two more of what's missing. And then you provide the next three, and it might take four submissions, three or four, to get all the pieces that you need. And then when you get it all together, and you see the entire picture, then you might realize that some of the first things that you submitted are incorrect, because they're in conflict with later things that have been submitted. I can't fix that. We try to help people, and it's not just our department, because utilities looks at stuff for us, both electric, water, and sewer, and public works, and the quality of the material, and the coordination of it before it comes in. My office cannot serve as a fact and correction checker for your coordination. Your architect, your designer, whoever, for your application, needs to know that, okay, your structural needs to match what you're planning to build. My staff does a lot of plan checking.
And it's.
Unfortunately, that takes a lot of time.
And I recognize it's a, it's a really tough thing to balance, because in a devil's advocate on the GC's behalf, if you do a lot of work with different municipalities, and school district, and this and that, each one of us governments required, you know, probably has different requirements, and maybe you're used to dealing with West Palm, and then you come here, and we have a whole different set of, slightly different set of requirements, I would say, that maybe you're not used to, and, and that kind of leads to.
The biggest difference is the qualitative information that is on your site plan that demarcates your setbacks, your floor-air ratio, your height. The building code is the same across the whole entire county. We accept the Palm Beach County Universal Building Permit Application. However, that application does not require the owner to sign it. Ours does. And it's remarkable how oftentimes, oh, there's a permit submitted for my property? Yeah. Or there's not one. I signed it. I'm like, well, we don't have it yet. So it works both ways. But the building codes on it is consistent across all municipalities. There are some nuances between FPNL, what they require, and what our utility requires. We have a different kind of meter. Maybe you should know that we provide our own electricity. People come in with all these FPNL specs, and I'm like, FPNL hasn't been here for ever.
Yeah.
You know, Jamie's department has specific requirements for stormwater and issues related to the right-of-way. But it's the qualitative information and quantitative that has to be on the site plan that demarcates your zoning requirements that seems to be the most difficult in any municipality. Just because a house was fine for West Palm on a lot that's the same size, doesn't mean it's fine here.
Right.
Historic district issue, it could be an orientation issue, it could be a lock coverage issue, because, and oftentimes it works in our favor, our lock coverage and FAR, floor-air ratio limits, are a bit greater than they allow in West Palm, because we base it on our original density being fairly dense, versus whereas West Palm is a little less dense, specifically in the historic districts.
Okay. Yeah, it's, and I think I agree with the assessment of using contractors and outside help for long-term and like bigger-picture things, but it is always sad to hear that how understaffed you are, because I know it's, it's already a stressful job, and, and, you know, things, things are often said, this contractor pointed out that somebody at the window told them, well, if we can't resolve it, then you have to go to your commissioner, and I think she correctly identified that's probably not the right, the best thing to say, because, you know, part of us running a city is we want adequately staffed people to be able to handle whatever situation. It should never have to, you know, percolate up to us, basically, that level of complaint, because we have plenty to do. But, and, you know, you mentioned it's a competitive salary, which, still working on the union negotiation, but hopefully we can get closer to where we need to be to get people in these jobs. I will say it's a good job, too, code enforcement, for people who, it's definitely stressful and tough, but for people who really care about your city, and, you know, all of us take notice of things that when you drive around, you're saying, why, that should be better, and whatever. Code enforcement really is like the boots on the ground. It's, it's the most thankless job, like.
We have a very high burnout rate.
Yeah.
And you are, you know that during that day, you're going to get yelled at by somebody.
You're going to get hated on.
For showing up, saying that you got, you've done something wrong.
What about code volunteers?
You should hire teachers. We're used to that.
But what about, what about code volunteers? What if there is residents who?
There are plenty of residents that want to.
And they went through the chaining and all that?
And what would they do?
Let's just say they only handled things like mattresses on, on porches and cars parked on lawn. They only handled things that were unsightly, that they could see without.
Here's where it would benefit us. If the people want to work, people are interested in doing code volunteer work, get with your neighborhood association and serve as your co-compliance liaison, and proactively work with your citizens in your community to prevent or proactively resolve the problem before it ever has to get to co-compliance. You know your neighbors. If your neighbors are not following the rules, knock on the door and say, hey, we really would appreciate you following the rules. And we had one that was fairly successful in my neighborhood. He decided to move to. He decided to move to a much more affluent neighborhood and our co-compliance has plummeted. But anyway, that's in a different.
No, and we had one in Royal Point Sienna where we just had code at Royal Point Sienna. And we would have any concerns, just email to that one person. So there wasn't 17 people emailing.
And that person was able to get a lot of voluntary compliance without it ever having to come to our office.
Yeah, so.
With people being scared of putting their own name, I mean, I've said, use mine, I don't care.
So maybe we, that, oh, yeah, my, if you see how many I've put in with the city.
Yeah.
Very busy girl.
That doesn't mean it's necessarily me. No, I do drive around once, once a month, I take two days and I drive my entire district.
Yeah, same.
And I usually will get a phone call from Yolanda going, have you stopped to even breathe today? Because I just keep sending everything in. And I think it's important because, you know, we are here to help and to assist and it's not over the littlest things.
Are you, are you sending that through the system or are you sending it direct?
Through the, just like I do with all the lights that are out, I go into the city's website and I report where the lights are out, the streetlights. But I think that if we can, since you're the N A P C liaison, encourage our neighborhoods to come up with another, you know, do the code liaison like we were doing years ago, I think it could be beneficial.
It'll also help us better understand what the priorities are between neighborhoods or among the neighborhoods, which is because they don't, you don't all have the same priority. But again, you all know.
I think mattresses is pretty much everyone's.
Much more happy having my neighbor come tell me, hey, you know, we really would like you to try to do something versus a uniform person coming up and saying, hey, you got a zone violation, a code violation.
A lot of the time it's just, and I don't mean ignorance in a negative way, it's just ignorance, meaning not knowing.
I gave one of my neighbors the little good neighbor pamphlet and I circled, can't have cars because they have two wrecked cars in their driveway that you can see from Fourth Avenue. The next day I came out and it was crumbled up and laying in the alleyway.
Of course it was.
So I knocked on the door and I'm like, did you drop something? So it's not always well received.
No, it's not. Oh, my God.
And his mom got really upset because he's a young 20 something that, that did this. And he's like, I didn't mean to throw it on the ground, I meant to throw it in the garbage. I go, still, missing the point. So yes, you can be that person who can knock on the door, that doesn't mean, and then sometimes you got, okay, you know, I've given you two and a half months. No, now it's going to have to go to code. You know, but I think that that's a, a good point is for us to do the code liaison again and encourage the neighborhoods to do it. Even the businesses, if each business on the block, you know, like a good business, like we used to have a business steward, like when we owned the gym years ago, they're like, okay, you're responsible for this block, getting out information, letting us know things have to be done. I think that goes a long way. It helps you guys.
I'm just going to point out because I, I guess I generally fear for people's safety and you're very type A and it probably works well for you, but I wouldn't recommend people to go, you know, unless you know the person. It's one thing if you know the person, but mental health issues are out there, there's a lot of like, for neighborhood associations to walk the streets and report things, you know, I would keep it street and alley level for sure, like, you know, you don't want to, you just, you just want to be safe because there's too many altercations that happen out there and it's, it's never, and that's part of why the burnout is so strong and on code and, you know, our code employees is because they're never going to, Yolanda's never going to get a good Google review. If she's at your door, it's, you're not, if she's there, you're probably not happy that she's there and.
I do want to take a moment to commend both she and some of our clients. We have gotten some very nice.
Yeah, work with them.
Commendation emails for both Alicia's front desk staff and co-compliance, helping someone understand and bring them to compliance. We have had people in horrific tears, getting ready to like choke somebody and Yolanda, maybe it's because she's a mother of a lot of kids, she's able to get into the point where they're like, want to give her a hug. And I've watched in the parking lot several times and I'm like, well, maybe with COVID, we shouldn't allow the hug, but I appreciate they wanted to give you one. So there, there are quite a number of success stories with her.
If you.
I would say that's the majority too. There's always going to be like the few that are just get off my lawn.
If you get an email like that, it would be helpful to share it with us so that we know that we're getting positive because we always get the negative stuff.
We share them with, with H R and have them placed in the personal record.
For us to know too.
But H R sends out, do you guys get the email that shows H R does the accommodations of who gets kudos from who?
No.
Diaz is shaking.
There's a thing on our website too that people can submit, hey, I had an interaction with the city employee.
And sometimes I see things, but it'd be nice if we, if they're coming in that we know about them because we really, we do get all the. Okay, where are we? Where are we?
You were going to talk about an R F Q, I think.
Okay, I just have one, excuse me? I got, yes, and I've got the cards. The one thing I did want to talk about, and we've talked about it a couple of times and we've never come to an answer and I don't think we'll come to it tonight, but, you know, we've passed the ordinance about having someone, you know, for a rental license, having someone available and I forget how many hours they had to be.
24 hours.
24 hours. But we've never established how that is going to be used and how, I'm assuming you're doing it.
We have that information in one of our, and I think this came up at a different meeting.
Right.
With the data sets that are in novel line as they will be migrated to our new system to be able to share it more broadly with the public is one of our goals.
Okay. I was just curious.
Hopefully it will not be a 14 year slog, it will maybe be two years log, but we're going to get there. So there's more information available on the website. They've, I T as well as webmaster have come a long way with, especially if this A I thing that this little comes across, it's going to be really helpful for citizens as well as you.
I mean, if the, if the information is buried in this, you know, it doesn't help. All right, public camera, is this you, was it Ms. Brown, Ms. Peggy Fisher? Who didn't actually, is this you? You didn't put your name on it, I'll do it, I'll do it, I just assumed. I was going to say, I just started guessing who they are now.
I think a good budget item for next year would be appropriate, a proper sound system for this room. Peggy Fisher, North A Street. I have heard, and this was something I heard last year from a business owner on South H or South G Street, that when they were visited by the fire inspector, the fire inspector shared how they could, weren't inspecting a number of businesses along those two streets because they didn't have business licenses. And so I would like to know what we do as a city to make sure that the businesses operating in a lot of these rows of storage places that people operate businesses, businesses out of, along G and, along G down this way and G and H, what we do to make sure our businesses do have licenses? Do we make it a point to go out and ask each business, go door to door and ask each business to see their license? And I think if we don't, then we should be doing that on either every other year, every year. If we've got a number of businesses that are operating without a license, one, it's a danger to people, depending, especially if they're doing car repairs, which is what a lot is, is on these streets. And two, is they're taking money that the city should have for their use of the road and everything else. So I think if we're going to start being a lawfully operating community, we need to enforce whether or not people have licenses. As far as rental licenses and single-family neighborhoods, there's a lot of unlicensed second units, whether it's an actual converted garage, an R V or whatever else. And as far as P B S O addressing vehicles on the road, try on the west side with all the lawn maintenance vehicles that are the bigger trucks with the metal dump area in the back, pulling trailers and parking on the road.
If you, I mean, I've called, we've, I think we've all called on them and they do, it disappeared, the one I called on. Ms. Serrano.
Hi, Janet Serrano, 413 North L Street. Just about three points I had. One concerns in a situation we hit at our house at 413 North L. The gentleman to the north of us at 415 died a few years ago. House was in bad shape, he kept getting code violations. But now he's dead, so nothing's happening because on Papa records, which I understand they have to use, notices kept going to him. So I thought there's got to be a way to notify the person who holds, who owns this property now, who holds the mortgage on it. So I did a little bit of research online, found out who held the mortgage, also found out who serviced the mortgage, which was a different company and wrote, emailed both those companies saying, look what's happening here next door to this property you own, it's accruing code fines every day. And shortly after that, I noticed they started commowing the lawn, started kind of taking care of it. And I think it was because it finally got to the right people who owned it. So maybe that's something, you know, if you've got somebody you really want to get in touch with, it took some research to find out who actually held the mortgage, but it was all there on the Papa website. Another thing I wanted to address was just, you were just talking about neighborhood associations being involved. I'll certainly take this back to our association. I'm wondering if we could come up with sort of a friendly tag that says, look, this is bulk pickup day, these are garbage days, you know, you must get your cans in at a certain time and put that on the mailbox of the house that we think, not in the mailbox, you can't do that, but maybe tape it to the outside of the house that we think is actually committing a code violation. If we could inform them in a friendly manner, I don't know if, if associations would have the authority to do that or not legally. And one more thing, we added 600 square feet to our cottage in 2020. It's a 1920s historic cottage, so we had to go through historic review board, had to go through permitting. We started in October with our plans by, we had our permit by December. It went absolutely without a hitch. I cannot say enough good things about the permitting department, the inspections, the historic review board, I mean.
When was that recently?
COVID, during the year of COVID.
Oh, wow, yeah.
So they started in January, we were through by July with the C O A.
That's wonderful.
So you're right, Mr. Waters, we had a contractor who was wonderful. He knew the procedures, he submitted all the proper documents from day one and it goes really smoothly.
That was great.
If you submit the right.
You also collaborated with staff from the very beginning and that is paramountly important and it really helped you out.
Yes, yes, we did, yeah. Historic was whole, it was just a wonderful experience. So thank you for that.
Good to hear, thank you. Ms. May.
I just want, I know we don't have, we don't respond, but this is a little lax about our meeting. I think that the N A P C could probably print those kinds of door hangers for all of the neighborhoods to use so that it was coming from the N A P C and it wasn't coming from a person, a specific neighborhood, a specific president. It's coming from the N A P C. So we can talk about that at our February N A P C meeting, I'll make sure to get it on the agenda. And then we can talk, I'll talk to Glenn to make sure what's legal before I bring it to the N A P C.
Can I throw in a, a quick suggestion?
Sure.
Sometimes I wonder, and maybe this is just because of me and sometimes, you know, our days run together, so keeping track of weeks, like how you, some of your neighborhood associations will put out a yard sign, meeting coming up this Monday, a yard sign that says bulk this Tuesday, whatever. Man, sometimes that would be super helpful.
We do that in our neighborhood in three languages.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did that for a long time, Creole, Spanish and English for, for years.
Yeah, because, because to your point earlier, I think, I think 95% of it is ignorant, they just don't know. Or they just forget, you know, which is totally forgivable, yeah.
Yeah. Do you come to our downtown jewel neighborhood association meetings, Mr. Diaz?
It's been a while.
Yeah, I think it has.
I went last week, they were very nice.
That would be, that's, and that's a great idea, we could do that.
And, and the, I think before there was printing of those signs by the city, if I don't recall, I kind of remember that.
No, we paid for them out of grants that we applied through, through the, through the county. We all wrote from different grants.
Oh, okay.
Through a grant process, this is like 10 years ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
The city just had to basically sign off as, as part of the grant, like a basically a letter of support.
Right, and, and it could, again, it could be an N A P C thing because I just want to think about equity for neighborhoods. Some have huge treasuries, some do not, believe it or not, we do not. Nobody, the more money you have, I think the less you're willing to give away, something like that. But, um, yeah, so we would have to make it equitable and I think that's a way that the N A P C can, can help. Anything that's citywide. So I'll bring up both of those things next month.
In the past, I've contacted, I've looked up and found the name of the owner and just tracked them down and said, listen, do you know what's going on at your property? And, you know, and this is why I was, so I have always pushed to have a person to contact because they often don't. You know, they don't, they live in Chicago and they don't know what's going on. So that's, I really, that, that public person, I'm really hoping to get that going soon, I hope, glad to hear it's happening. R F Q for a. Oh, Mr. Brown's light's on.
I had one quick thing, if, feel free, if you guys are looking to push stuff out through N A P C to people, if you want to, let me take a look at the draft before you guys push those out because I'm like, first thing comes to mind, like Christine over in Solid Waste Recycling, we would, well, I, we could suggest that you add, mention the recycle coach app on that, that listing because that actually if people, I mean, we can't, they can voluntarily just sign up for that.
I get that.
Put in your, your address and it will notify you every week.
So before I even do it, I'll, I'll meet with you, we can talk about it at my next one-on-one.
Yeah, and you can set it up just however, what your preference is, but you can do like a 12 hour notification that tomorrow is bulk or tomorrow is veg. And it'll actually alert you right on your phone based on your address.
Yeah, I have that.
So you'll always get a reminder the night before of what the next day is. So just stuff like that, that people may or may not, we, we push it out there all the time, but some people might not see it, so.
I know, I'm Tom's friend, but yeah.
Just run it out there.
Yeah, 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 I mean, whatever we need to do, I'd rather do it in one shot before we print stuff and then say, oh, it would have been good to have this. So, yeah, absolutely. Okay, good, yay.
That's why I have Lou. Okay, R F Q for the ordinance.
Yes.
We all want it.
Once or twice, I've heard someone mention. A few times, obviously, you know, we, we have not done this before. There are, as everyone is aware, in all of the chapters of our code, there are some things that are antiquated. There are some things that conflict depending on which chapters you're in. This involves multiple city departments, like Solid Waste Recycling is, you know, help and safety, chapter 12. Like there are a lot of different portions of this would involve a lot of different city chapters, we obviously have our city attorney, Mr. Trisivia here tonight, who's looked in some other things, but being that we have not gone through this process before, we, we had some questions.
Don't you love that we're the commission that wants to do everything for the first time?
Right, yeah.
But, but as, as Commissioner May and as each of you have said before, like if, if we don't start though, we're never going to finish. So it, it's obviously going to be a multi-year process, a huge undertaking. It's, it's a lot, but, you know, obviously the, the conversation we wanted to have tonight is first and foremost, which I'm pretty sure I don't know the answer, but we wanted to get some consensus from, from everyone that this is definitely something that collectively you're all on board with. We, we definitely want to start this process, we want to start tackling this and we all realize that we do need to move forward at some point and, and just start, start. So I don't know, Glenn, if you wanted to kind of give a little bit of.
Spiel.
There we go, not much spiel. You said it, it's a huge task and ready to start, move with the first step, right? So it's going to be a long time and the question is, do you look for somebody that's going to look at the whole thing in the first part? Or do you say we want somebody to look at this and then if they do a good job, continue? Or do you do an agreement that says, here's the whole project, almost like a task order or an engineering contract? You finish this and then if we got what you did on this, then we can do a task order for number two. And if not, we can say, okay, sorry, didn't work out.
That's not a bad idea to chunk it out a little bit.
Yeah, that's what we were really thinking about, as the more we talked about.
Are there specific companies that do this?
Well, you put out a proposal and say, okay, this is just like an engineering, you know, you want to bid on building a road this wide, but we're going to give it to you in segments. And if you finish this segment, then we'll do a task order for this segment.
So we can do it by chapter or by something?
Yeah.
That's the hardest part is where do you start? Do you start at number one or do you start with, for example, you know, William, you plan, started planning and zoning?
Chapter 23.
That in and of itself is a.
23.
Huge, right. And where do you start?
What I will say is that chapter 23 is the newest section of our code of ordinances, that it was completely redone and adopted in 2013. My suggestion would be is to hire someone to evaluate across all chapters and identify all inconsistencies, conflicts and where portions of those chapters may be in conflict with Florida statute. And then take.
Or not enforceable.
That would be different.
That's a whole different.
And then we come back with you and then prioritize which chapters, and I think chapter two is going to have a lot of issues. Chapter 14, even though it's the business license one, we, I think that's where the vacant registry, that needs attention. And then we don't have operating ordinances for electric utility. We have them for the other utility, we don't have that one. And there are some issues in the administration and way the city's set up, because as an example, when I got here, something, a question came up about P B S O and our entire code of ordinances. when I got here, something, a question came up about PBSO, and our entire code of ordinances referenced the Lake Worth Police Department, which didn't exist. So technically PBSO was operating here illegally, Glenn's office hadn't been hired. I think they're the ones who found the discrepancy when I was having a problem with the co-compliance. I'm like, oh, doohickey, we don't have authority for.
And that's a legal word, that doohickey, yeah.
So we went back and changed every reference to Lake Worth Police Department to the prevailing law enforcement agency of the city of Lake Worth. We still have, I think, references to City of Lake Worth, but it doesn't include the beach in the code of ordinances.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure. So kind of an overall view, specifically looking for inconsistencies?
Well, it's the biggest thing that we have complaints from is that as you adopt ordinances, all those in conflict predating that are considered basically non-void.
But they're still there.
But they're still there. And so unless someone writes, reads a little note down here at the bottom and sees when it was adopted, they don't know that's not, you know, the.
Yeah, it's time.
And there's a lot of those.
It's a lot.
This is a job for an OCD person.
I would love it.
You can have it.
No, I don't know how to do it, but obviously somebody does.
I think, I think you and Elizabeth would be great.
Yes, it gets me very excited.
So it's an outside company, it's an RFQ?
It would obviously be an RFQ, yes. And to Glenn's point, I know when we did the four-year infrastructure bond program, that was basically broken out on, on an annual basis. But we did have the ability at the end of that chunk of jobs, that particular year, if we weren't happy with the result we were receiving from that particular engineering firm or that particular CEI, the construction engineering inspection firm that we were utilizing, we had the ability, based on the way that it was written, to then go on to basically the second that was in, in that list. But we could look at something like that as well, as part of this process.
Because, yeah, because I know for a time, the city wasn't having things codified, is my understanding, and I'm hoping that that all got caught up a few years ago. I mean, there was a time where they were not, what?
As we all just found out, right? I mean, there was something that was not codified, so you don't know what you don't know. We don't know what else might have been codified. I mean, until, we could go ahead, and that wasn't ever codified, so.
And they, I mentioned this, they were doing codifications only twice a year. And if there wasn't, you know, a chunk of it, they might wait a whole year. It caused, it, it, several, first, for several years I was here, it was a real problem.
I remember, yeah, I'm surprised MUNICode doesn't offer that service.
They do the codification.
No, no, the, the review.
They, they might, I wouldn't be surprised if we get a proposal from them, or their new predecessor over there, or the new successor.
Or like, almost if they went to codify something, they would say, well, you're gonna do this, but did you know your code says this over here? Like, almost like a, a red light, like, you can't do that unless you change this part.
Yeah, but that's after we go back and fix the whole thing. The exciting part.
Very good about finding scripters errors, I can tell you that. But that's, you know, our, our fault, we missed it too, so.
Okay, so I think we have consensus, go ahead. I see lights on.
Oh, I don't know why it's on.
So, so if, if there's consensus, what we would do is basically put together this RFQ. I can then review that with each of you in one-on-ones before that would go out. But obviously, we'd involve Valentina and everything, I don't know if that's something you guys want to bring back, as like an unfinished business item or something like that on an agenda before it goes out, or if you just want to handle it during one-on-ones. But the main thing is basically getting this entire thing together, making sure we incorporate everything that we want in this, and that you guys are comfortable with the terms and how we kind of define what we're looking for, and then, and push this thing out. So it's, it's really up to how you guys would like us to do it before we push this out.
Bring it to us on one-on-ones and see what we're doing, and then, I would say, new business, when you say new business.
Yeah, new business, and then we can have input from the community.
I definitely want to have input from the community because they're gonna have, I mean, that's 44,000 more pairs of eyes, I mean, you know, 40 more pairs of eyes that will actually read it, but more eyes, more better.
I think as part of the, the process, we would want to make sure that RFQ contains, I mean, there's gonna have to be public input, I don't know if there's, how many charrettes we, we actually request, or, but there would have to be some type of public.
To make the RFQ or during the process of evaluation? Oh, of course, yeah.
Yeah, because there's a lot of, especially as we've heard over the years, and, and things that are kind of antiquated in our code or different things that people have sided on that don't typically make sense.
We need that experience to be shared.
Yeah, so it would be beneficial as part of the process to, to hear from some of the people who've dealt with this over the years.
Right, and, sounds good to me.
And one thing I can see being tricky is, there might be folks that say, I want to change red to green. Well, that's a substantive change.
No, this is, yeah.
So I think we're all clear, we're not looking to make substantive changes, red to green. Maybe red was supposed to be slightly pink and it turned out, you know, so, so you said typographical errors, inconsistencies, not obsolete.
Go ahead.
Like the, the lights, the Christmas lights that we did, dealt with last year, you know, where we had to, you know, it was, it was an ordinance which is sort of outdated, and it really wasn't a big deal, and we changed it. So those kinds of things, and I think our citizens could probably help us with input if they've run into something as an inconsistency or something.
Not to be the Debbie Downer of the Union, however, there are errors of our code that drastically need to be updated. However, we've been preempted from fixing them, like our business tax receipt schedule by the state.
Or any like Airbnbs, or, we can, oh, I had, I had an interesting discussion about Airbnbs yesterday.
So, yeah.
But to, to the attorney's point, obviously during any charrette process or whatever, we're gonna get a lot of input on a lot of different things. And obviously, not everything is probably gonna be valid, or a lot of things might be very, very.
Yeah, just because they say it doesn't mean that next week it's gonna come up as an ordinance change. Is that what you're saying?
Or that it should come up.
That, and there are probably things that might be very singular or something, like a one particular thing that's very specific that may or may not make sense. But again, part of that, that public process, you're gonna get a lot of different things from a lot of people.
Sure, people want to share their stories.
It's just a matter of kind of like shifting and kind of sifting things out that is legitimate. Some things are probably like, okay, but yeah, it's just, it's part of that, that overall process. But that's part of any kind of charrette, you're gonna get everything.
And if anybody comes up with something that they think is, you know, wrong, a bad, a bad ordinance, that's a separate process.
That's a good process, right.
Yeah, we already have a process for that.
You already do, you already do all the time.
Yeah, and we don't have to wait till the end of the four years to change stuff we find, but we should be methodical in this process.
I kind of like what Jamie says, you know, maybe once a year or every six months, or some say, okay, this chunk is gonna get approved, and this chunk, chapter one, chapter two, whatever, whatever order it goes in.
Well, let's see how it goes, it might not be as bad as we think.
I hope so.
Well, I, I think that's a, a good way to move forward because it's gonna show that we're actually getting things done instead of trying to get this whole thing done in one massive chunk, and then years from now, we're like, it's finally done. It's like, no, we, we kind of take it chunk at a time.
And, and it's good for the community to see parts as it goes, so they don't say, you're not doing anything. Yes, we are, it's just taking a minute.
That is also, again, it's not, I just don't, I want to make sure everyone knows it's not gonna be a fast process because obviously, as I mentioned before, there is a lot of staff involvement.
Right.
William just went through how he's not fully staffed, and we're all also busy in our day-to-day, so it's just gonna be a matter of kind of balancing everything and making sure that we are able to put in the time that's required with whoever is selected to make sure that, that we're doing this the correct way. So it is gonna be a slow process, but again, if we don't start.
I envision a room full of monks looking over, blind, going blind.
It's law, law school interns.
Law school interns. Wouldn't.
The ones at the Mount's garden?
We went yesterday.
I went yesterday.
We went yesterday, it was beautiful.
Tell me about it.
It was gorgeous.
That's, let's hire them.
Tomorrow at 3 o'clock is the closing ceremony. Yeah, it's the Buddhist monks with the sand drawings.
They make the monulla and then they wreck it. Nothing's permanent.
Life is temporal. So, how is 8:06, can we go home? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. GS. He's very patient.
First, I'm, I'm really happy this is finally coming to fruition. I remember, I think it was one of my very first meetings up here where we went through an exercise where we wrote notes on like things that we wanted to do, and this was at the top of my list. And so it's good to see it finally happening, and I just wanted to like throw out some, some thoughts out there because I think they're important to consider, and this town loves, loves a good study, and that's what we're gonna have to start with, a good study of our, of our comp plans and our LDRs, identified our priorities, I think that's absolutely correct. That part, I think, is, I would say, kind of standard. I think it's a good step because what we really should be doing, and I've brought this up on previous budget, budget times, including the first one that I was part of, we really need to get in a habit of doing this every year. And like at the end of the year, say, okay, we passed a bunch of things, let's, are they accomplishing the goals that we set out to do, has anything changed in state law? Like, we really should just kind of keep on top of it as we're going, and just get in the habit of like the procedural and the consistency things and, and all that. But then there's the other side that I think is a lot more difficult to quantify. But I think is equally important is that sooner than later, our comp plan are definitely not gonna be painful and strenuous, comp plan process starts in a number of years. And I think an important consideration would be as we go through and review the, the code that we have, and we have things like the mobility plan and parking study, all these things that are going to apply to our future comp plan, maybe to have, and I'm not sure what this would necessarily look like, I know we've had a lot of conversations in our one-on-ones about this, but having kind of a, at least a high-level look of, okay, when we go into our comp plan, let's not wait until then to do like incredibly drastic things and, and maybe, you know, let's make that process maybe a little bit less painful by looking at the review of our code right now and kind of just like working towards, you know, potential goals that we'll have on our next comp plan. Because we already have mobility, parking study, housing study, we have a number of things, number of tools that we could start considering. Yeah, so.
To remind you that the mobility safety plan is adopted as part of the comp plan. It's already becoming a part of that, the open space recreation master plan will become part of the comp plan. The new carbon neutrality will become a whole new element. And then in, in addition to the studies we've been, we've been asking everyone who's been working with us to evaluate our comp plan and identify areas that need to be updated or fixed based on what you've ascertained in a study that you've done. That's why when you did the mobility plan, it was more changes than just the mobility plan document. You changed the future land use, the transportation element, economic development element, housing, neighborhood element, and I think another something else, and the same thing will happen with the open space recreation master plan.
Right, and that's, you know, that's why it's important to kind of keep that perspective of, because it's probably a couple of years or a few years when you're gonna do the comp plan total, like, you know, do a new comp plan, if you will.
Six years from now is the deadline to have it.
Six years. So the process will start in probably a few years-ish, yeah. And so that's why, you know, I'm, I'm saying it'd be really good to have that, that high-level perspective of, let's make sure these things roll over and are in place so that when that process does happen, because if you've ever seen a comp plan printed out with their accompanying LDRs, there's a reason why in law school, nobody wants to do land use and environmental law anymore. It's because they're stacks, and it's a lot to read, and they're gonna be monks with poor eyesight. So let's make it, you know, let's ease into that, that future process.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank all of you.